Same sexual.
Bye.
Good morning and welcome to the May 20th, 2020 Board of County Commissioners meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. We are streaming this morning's meeting on KPTS Channel 8, also on the county's Facebook and YouTube platforms. You'll notice that we are still social distancing in our room and we'll be using the conference line as needed. I'd like to remind everyone that Monday is Memorial Day and county offices will be closed to the public that day. Emergency services are still available by dialing 911. Also, since the holiday is on Monday, the Health Department will not be operating its drive-through testing site or sampling site on Monday. However, you can still make an appointment to be swabbed or sampled on Saturday morning. You can start the process by dialing 211 to get that going and schedule your appointment on Saturday. On the agenda, Commissioners, we have meeting minutes, two proclamations this week, one for Emergency Medical Services Week and National Public Works Week. You'll have a discussion about reopening the Sedgwick County Courthouse and other county facilities, and there's a discussion of the CARES Act as well. And then we have one new business item for procurement. And with that, Chairman, I will hand the meeting to you.
Thank you, Kate. Good morning, everybody, and thank you to all the public who have joined us via the KPTS or online. And welcome back, Commissioners, to the meeting. Meeting will be called to order Wednesday, May 20th, for the Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item.
In vacation, to be observed by a moment of silence, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present. Before we go to public agenda, Mr. Papoon, am I forgetting anything to public announcements?
No, sir. We just were just supposed to, according to the Attorney General's opinion, mention how we receive public comment for this meeting. And I know I receive public comment and all of you receive public comments, so... But we're not having an executive session today, so we don't have to announce that or deal with that, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, Madam Clerk, we call... Did you call the public agenda? Yeah.
Public agenda.
Okay. We're at the public agenda. Commissioners, you received a copy of the public comments. I think there's only... There's been three of them. If they've all been reviewed, does anybody want to comment on any of them or being none entertained, a motion to receive and file?
No move.
Second.
Been a motion and second to receive and file the public comments. Being no other comment, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, special meeting minutes of April 29th, 2020.
Commissioners, you have... You received a copy of the minutes. I would like, if it's okay with you all, I'd like to combine A and B, the minutes of April 29th and the special meeting of the minutes on May 1st as well. So if there's no objection, any changes or omissions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. And the second? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. At this time, I think there's a... Everyone handed us over to Commissioner Howell as we get into the new...
All right. I would like to make a...
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, I didn't do the proclamation.
You didn't do the proclamations first? All right, thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item. My apologies.
Proclamations. Item C, proclamation declaring Emergency Medical Services Week.
Okay. Commissioners, I got ahead of myself, my apologies. We have two proclamations today. The first one... Here he comes. Dr. Gallagher is going to join us. I'll read the first one. Morning, Dr. Gallagher. Whereas, Emergency Medical Services is a vital public service and the dedicated paramedics and emergency medical technicians of Sedgwick County Emergency Medical Services are committed to provide exemplary medical care and ambulance transportation to the citizens of Sedgwick County. And whereas Sedgwick County EMS is ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Whereas, access to quality emergency health care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the Emergency Medical Service System consists of emergency physicians, emergency nurses, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, and other healthcare professionals. And whereas, the members of Emergency Medical Services Teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of Emergency Medical Services Providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Peter Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of May 17th through the 23rd of 2020 as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 2020 theme for EMS Week is, quote, "Ready today, preparing for tomorrow." I encourage the community to observe this week with the appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And here to join us is Dr. Gallagher, the head of Emergency Medical Services. Thank you for being here and tell us what you want to tell us, Mr. Dr. Gallagher.
Thank you, sir.
Move to approve the proclamation. Okay. Motion to approve and second? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Now, Dr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. John Gallagher, your EMS Director and the Medical Director for the City of Wichita Sedgwick County EMS System. It's a great honor to be able to accept the EMS Week proclamation on behalf of all of our EMS system partners. It's always hard to decide what to say during this week because the things that we proclaim and believe and put into words are all the things that we believe and think throughout the rest of the year. There isn't anything special about our appreciation for our providers, but this is the week we choose to verbalize it and talk about all the wonderful things that they do the rest of the year. So, we do have a couple of things scheduled for all the different providers, including a small gift. You have in front of you the 2020 EMS Week coin that was put together by our leadership staff and Tony Giuliano. This is to commemorate all of the work that they have done over the past year and to recognize the challenges that they've had before them. On the face of the coin, you'll see our Star of Life with two Latin phrases. The top roughly translates into "so that others may live" as that's our primary mission to keep people alive and thrive. And the bottom is "no greater love" because we believe that the path and the career that these people have chosen is the highest level of love that anyone can show for their fellow human. On the back of the coin is our department crest, a model of one of our ambulances. And of course, no 2020 coin would be complete without the coronavirus on it. It has certainly dominated our work this year. So, once again, thank you for the proclamation. It's an honor to serve and even a greater honor to work with the people that we have in the EMS system. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. This is a very impressive coin and it really is a good work. Obviously, you're in the line of fire every day, every minute. So, thanks. Please extend our appreciation to all of these entities that help support this. And thank you. I was going to translate the Latin for us all, but since you did it for me, I don't have to. So, thank you. Any other comments from Commissioners? Okay. Thank you again, Doctor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, you bet. Have a good day. Okay, our second proclamation is for... Here comes our recipient. Bear with me a moment. Well, I'll go ahead and start. Come on in, Mr. Spears. Whereas, public works services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives. And whereas, the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as streets, highways, bridges, drainage improvements, environmental services, household hazardous waste, and noxious weed control. And whereas, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. Whereas, the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is especially dependent upon the efforts and skills of public works professionals. And whereas, the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is substantially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas, the year 2020 marks the 60th Annual National Public Works Week. Say that fast, three times, ten times. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman Pete Meitzner, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim May 17th through 23rd of 2020 as National Public Works Week in Sedgwick County. And I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And you've heard the proclamation? A motion to accept?
So moved.
Motion and second. Being no comment further, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. And here to accept the proclamation is our one and only David Spears. Welcome.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, David Spears, Director of Public Works. Since 1960, APWA, that's American Public Works Association, has sponsored National Public Works Week. Across North America, our more than 30,000 members in the United States and Canada use this week to energize and educate the public on the importance of the contribution of public works to their daily lives, planning, constructing, managing, and operating the heart of our local communities and building the quality of life. APWA has chosen the rhythm of public works as the theme for the 2020 National Public Works Week. This year's poster challenges our members and their citizens to think about their communities as a symphony of essential services, working in unison to create a great place to live. Every community has a rhythm, a heartbeat, that reflects its essence and tempo of life. Public works provides the harmony needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders and capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life. Once again, I want to remind you that infrastructure is the mother's milk of economic development. Wanted to throw that in also. Thank you for the proclamation. And here's the poster.
Wow. That's very impressive, David. Very nice, very nice. So that's nationwide, huh?
Nationwide.
What?
Yes.
Good. Well, and I'm reminded, David, that our citizens, and I think in our community, does a nice job. You've got your public works out there, cones and getting in and out of ditches and the safety of our workers and, of course, the citizens is crucial. And I'm so glad that the citizens please, you know, practice safety as they're driving by, you know, they're easy to gawk and wonder what's going on. But it seems like we have a pretty good record of our safety and encouraged to keep that way. So, other Commissioners? Commissioner O'Donnell?
So, David, I'm very glad to see you. In fact, when I saw you get up, I ran to my office to get something that... And I don't mean to embarrass you or your staff, but everyone knows that the City of Wichita... Well, actually, they didn't. It was more Sedgwick County and the state of Kansas, but the city obviously participated in their own way. But the 235 and Kellogg Project, which was many years... I know when I was on the city council, we started talking about that back in about 2011. It recently got... Was completed. And we here at Sedgwick County and Trans Systems received the American Council of Engineering Companies Outstanding Engineering Project of the Year for the state of Kansas for 2020. And they sent an award. And I just... This is very impressive. And this is something that we, as a county, need to promote, that what you're doing along with our partners. But that project is instrumental for our whole region, not just my district, but our whole region. It's been great. And I know now we've moved on to the North Junction, but we can't forget how problematic Kellogg and 235 was for so many years. And you guys really stepped up and delivered a great project, so good. So I can say I'm not biased, I am just being honest, that it was the best project of the year for 2020. So, we can display this and make sure that the public is made aware through our social media as well, I hope. Congratulations to you and your staff, David.
Thank you. We're very proud of that.
You can tell Brad over at Trans Systems, good job, too.
Yeah, there's a lot of effort. A lot of people worked on that. I mean, also the City of Wichita, you have to give them credit. They... And KDOT, and then us. I think the county put in about $11.3 million on that project. And seems like it never ends. Now we're on to the next one, to the North Junction, and then there'll be another one after that. But we're very, very proud of that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a great honor for us in Sedgwick County to receive that out of the whole state from the American Council of Engineers.
Yeah, I recall the urgency of that intersection, not only for our Wichita citizens getting into the airport and our Sedgwick County citizens getting to the airport, but all these regional people that would come and try to navigate those hairpin turns. It was a very, very dangerous, very dangerous intersection.
And it was done under budget and more than on time. It was substantially early, right?
Yes.
Nine months or something?
Yes. It went very fast and it was great. There's still more phases to go, but there's not funding for that yet, but we're working on that part. But to tag on what Commissioner Chairman Meitzner said, the safety, the weave, they call it the weave, the people getting on Kellogg and the people getting off Kellogg, where you go like... There were three wrecks every two weeks.
Wow.
So, this, we don't have that anymore. There are some, but not to that extent. So it was a great safety improvement.
Yeah. Well, congratulations on the award. That's well deserved. And please tell our partners at the city, at the state, and that Trans Systems won it in conjunction with Sedgwick County, it looks like.
Yes, sir.
So, please tell our friends at Trans Systems, too, that thank you for serving us so well.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. Congratulations again. Are you going to stick around for a second?
Sure.
We're going to do it off agenda.
Sure.
Okay, Madam Clerk, next item, please. Or new business?
Okay. New business. Item E, discussion regarding reopening the Sedgwick County Courthouse and facilities.
Yes, we're into the new business.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we would insert an off agenda item before we get to item echo. This would be an item to refer... That deals with the speed limit out on 159th Street. I've asked David Spears to stick around. We have a resolution for us to consider. I'd like to explain this further after we vote on the insertion of the off agenda item. So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. I'll second the off agenda item. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, off agenda item. Chris, your hour.
Yes, thank you for allowing me to explain this. So what we have out on 159th Street between the intersections of Pawnee and Harry is because it's a county line road, the east side of the road is controlled by Butler County and Andover, and the west side of the road is controlled by the township Sedgwick County and City of Wichita. And as a consequence, our side of the road is not marked for speed, so people traveling southbound will travel... The posted speed essentially is not posted, but the speed would be 55 miles an hour by default, according to Kansas statute. But if you're going northbound, the speed limit's posted with signage at 40 miles per hour. That's very, very non-standard. We don't normally do that. We have a single road that's got more than one speed limit. And as a consequence, law enforcement from Butler County or City of Andover are enforcing the speed for northbound traffic, but they don't have jurisdiction for southbound traffic. And we also have a lot of construction in the area and the traffic has really increased in the area. And the road's not in very good shape and with the high amount of traffic and a lot of folks traveling what appears to be much faster than what they should be traveling, we feel like this is a safety concern. So we would like to get the speed limit the same on both sides of the street and allow our law enforcement to begin to enforce those speeds as needed to bring the traffic down to a safer speed. So, we have a resolution prepared, I understand, that would change the speed limit on southbound 159th between Harry and Pawnee to match what's going on for northbound traffic. And with that, I'd like to make a motion, we move... I'm sorry, I'd like to move that resolution for adoption.
Okay. I will second that motion. That sounds like a logical thing to me. Do we have Mr. Spears to explain anything or David? Well, yeah, you agree with this as your traffic person?
Absolutely. We've had Mark Borst, our traffic engineer, look at it, and you can't have two different speed limits on the same piece of road. It makes sense for us to go down to 40 instead of them to come up to 55. I don't think Andover would go up to 55 anyway. The other thing is, it is a township road. City of Wichita, in the north half mile, has annexed up to the road but did not take it. So the entire half, west half of the road is in Minnehaw Township. We have talked with them. They are agreeable to go to 40 miles an hour, but the commission asked to pass that for it to be enforceable by the Sheriff's Department. And so, we definitely... We've looked at it. We recommend doing it.
Okay. Thank you. So there's a motion and a second for this resolution. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, David, and thank you, Commissioner Howell, for your work on that. It's not like it was governed at its best. Anyway, okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item E, discussion regarding reopening the Sedgwick County Courthouse and facilities.
Manager Stoltz and Ms. Cole, Tanya Cole, welcome to the commission meeting.
Okay. Morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I'm here this morning to talk about the Sedgwick County facilities reopening plan, and I gave you a little bit... We talked about that a little bit yesterday at the staff meeting, so... Just to give you a little bit of background, as you are aware, on March 23rd, due to COVID-19, the majority of our county facilities were closed to the public with some exceptions. The Sedgwick County Courthouse and Juvenile Courthouse remained open for some of the courts, needing to have that open for attorneys and for any public that needed to come in for any court needs, as well as the treasurer remained open on the first floor for any needs that they had there. They also had a drop box on the first floor for any needs for the treasurer's office, as well as the tag office remained open, and the crisis community remained open as well. However, our services and programs never closed. Those services and programs were able to be accessed through phone, email, website, and by appointment. All of our employees during that time could, who could telework, did. And any employees who had to be on site did so by appropriately using social distancing. That was at the workplaces and then as well as during meetings and so forth. On April 24th, we began to inquire with department heads on their department needs for reopening county facilities. And then on May 1, the manager put out an email to all employees that with the governor's plan of the state reopening, we could begin with the starting goal of looking at the main courthouse opening on May 26th if the departments could effectively do so. So, working towards that goal, we wanted to take a phased-in approach, providing safety for employees and the public. And so, as we looked at the Sedgwick County Health and Economic Recovery Plan, one thing that we looked at was the John Hopkins recommendation for phased reopening. And that was a hierarchy of controls for COVID-19 mitigation. So that was physical distancing, so whenever possible, having people work from home, telework, implementing engineering controls, so creating physical barriers between people, so that's social distancing as much as possible. And as well as, you know, putting up sneeze shields, you've heard of that. And then as well as, you know, we're familiar with cubicles, and so if we needed to heighten those cubicles, those cubicle walls, we would do that, again, creating physical barriers there. And then implementing administrative controls, so using technology to facilitate communication and finding ways to reduce contact between individuals. And then PPE, having people wear masks and gloves where needed. So considerations prior to opening for our department is the entry points and screenings. And so, this is really... The entry points and screening is really going to be used where we have courthouse police able to use the screening process. And so that's going to be at the main courthouse and the juvenile courthouse. And we talked yesterday a little bit about the screening process. And that's going to be a questionnaire that's been reviewed by the Supreme Court of Kansas as well as our local health officer, Dr. Menz. And then yesterday, we also heard from Commissioners that you all would like to see a temperature point, so we're going to implement that, hopefully by the 26th, when the courthouse, both courthouses opens. As well as, we're going to be implementing signage and sneeze shields, so barriers at customer service points. And then we'll also have personal protective equipment, so masks and gloves. And then as well, cleaning supplies and procedures. So, that's facial tissue, hand sanitizer, and disinfectant spray and wipes. So these are all the considerations prior to these departments opening to the public. So let me talk a little bit about PPE and cleaning supplies. So, right now, we have enough supplies for the facilities to adequately open. And then, once they open, we want to be able to continue to give them continuous supplies, but they will have to turn around and give us a consumption rate. So, we're not going to give them their complete supply that they asked for. We're going to give them about 25 to 30% of what they asked for, and then they're going to turn around and give us what their consumption rate is. So we're going to constantly be in contact with them to give them what their needs are. Signage for the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse, those are going to be installed this week. Actually, I think we're starting installation today. And then we're going to move forward after we get the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse. We're going to start with other facilities to get signage installed. Sneeze shields, that again is going to be installed in the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse, starting this week. We're starting with what we're calling basically temporary sneeze shields, and then we're moving to a more permanent solution, starting in late June, early July. And that simply is because we started out with a couple of vendors and because of high demand and limited resources, we're having to push that out a little bit and put in temporary sneeze shields at the moment to open up the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse. So let me move on to the signs. I want to... I have... We have several signs that we're going to implement in these facilities. And so I just want to show you a few so you can start to be familiar with these. You're going to see these in entry areas, common areas, and then you're also going to see these in the department areas. And you may be familiar with some of these already. This is what we're calling a self-assessment sign. And so, the public will start to see these signs, and we're asking that the public consider when you're coming into a building, if you have these symptoms, that you reschedule and come back at another time. So again, these are symptoms of fever, congestion, body aches, coughs, sore throat, and headache. Next, you'll see these signs, social distancing signs. You'll be familiar with this real soon, the stand here. So this will be signs that you see at entry points such as the courthouse. You'll see these because we'll ask people to line up on these signs. The bottom left there is your please stay six feet apart, so your social distancing signs. And then on the top left is going to be your elevator signs. So we're asking those folks that enter into our elevators, we're having a maximum occupancy of four people per elevator. So that's basically your four corners in your elevator, to have a maximum occupancy there. This is your sanitizing sign, so just a reminder to, again, wash and sanitize your hands often. So you'll see that around in our facilities as well. Okay. So let me start moving on to our facilities and give you some details about this. So for our main courthouse, this house is our district court, DA, sheriff, and county administration, which includes our county commission, treasurer, register of deeds, and county clerk. So effective May 26, of course, we'll have our normal hours and it will be open to the public. And again, we'll have the screening process of questions and we'll implement temperatures. Court hearings will be by appointment only. The public will be issued a mask to wear while in the building. The courts are still encouraging the public to do business remotely if they are able. And then we're asking employees to wear masks while dealing closely with the public and in public common areas. Okay. The juvenile courthouse, this is going to mirror procedures of the main courthouse. So again, they'll have normal hours. Screening process will be questions and temperatures. Again, they'll be open to the public, so court hearings will be by appointment only. The public will be issued a mask to wear while in the building. Again, the courts are encouraging the public to do business, what they can, remotely. And the public and employees are to wear masks while, and the employees while dealing with the public and in public common areas, employees should be wearing masks. Okay. Let me move on to the historic courthouse. So that houses elections, IT, HR, call center, and court trustee. So for this facility, we're going to phase in, opening now through July 3rd. Again, they have normal hours, so the facility will be closed to the public, however, operating virtually. And again, we're asking employees, when this facility opens, to wear masks while dealing closely with the public and in public common areas. For this facility and the next facility, Ronald Reagan, we want to make sure that the departments have those considerations in place before they open. So again, let me go back to that. Those considerations are the signage, the sneeze shields, the PPE, and the cleaning supplies before they open. So that's why we're doing this phased-in approach for these facilities. So Ronald Reagan Building, they house MABCD, MAPD, WAMPO, Appraiser, Aging, Calm Care Admin, and Project Services. So this is a phase-in, opening now through July 3rd, normal hours. Facilities will be closed to the public, operating virtually. And again, employees to wear masks while dealing with the public and in public common areas. For the tag offices, West and East, they have normal hours. They are open to the public. They are encouraging the public to renew tags by mail, online, or via ICANN app. They are encouraging the public to call ahead for appointments for title work. And they are only allowing 10 customers in the building at this time. The Sedgwick County Jail, they do have normal hours. Their tentative plan is to open the jail lobby on June 15th. They will provide a mask to the public while in the building. And Commissioner Dennis, I want to address the question that you had yesterday. You asked about inmates coming into the main courthouse. The inmates, if they can, they will do video hearing. So they have a video over there and they can do the hearing by video if available. If not, the sheriff's staff will take their temperature and then mask them when they come over here into the main courthouse. Okay. And then just to address other county facilities, we have many others. The ones that I listed here, mainly, I just wanted to focus on those that are really mostly open to the public. And so for Public Works, Household Hazardous Waste, they are currently open. And they will, again, put in sneeze shields and have those considerations in place, as well as corrections. They have a very thoughtful plan to be able to open to the public. Public Services, Calm Care, Health, CDO as well, will have normal hours. Their business continues, but again, their openings will be phased in now through July 3rd. And so before we get into any discussion and questions, there's just a few things I want to reiterate here. And that is that employees that can continue to work from home and telework, we want them to continue to do so. We're also asking employees that work closely with the public and when they're in public common areas, that they wear a mask, as well as the public who've come into the courthouses, that's the main courthouse and juvenile courthouse, that they will be masked while they're in the building. So I will stand for any questions.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. One is, you briefed on the elevators. Is four persons?
Two questions. One, you briefed on the elevators, that only four persons in the elevator. As our courthouse opens, we get a lot of people. And so how are we going to handle all those people that are standing there waiting to get on to the elevators? Because four people is not going to handle the crowds that we get.
In the main courthouse, I don't believe we're going to put that occupancy on the main courthouse if everyone is wearing a mask. So if we move to Reagan or Historic Courthouse and those folks aren't masked, the occupancy has to be four in those elevators. But in the main courthouse, if everyone is masked, we don't have to stick with that occupancy load in the elevator.
Okay. And then on the tag offices, you briefed 10 people. Will that move up as we go to 15 and so forth to the governor's orders?
Let, I've got Randy on the phone, Bargdil, and I might have him answer that question.
Randy, are you available? Unmute, please. Randy, are you available? Unmute, please. Hi, Randy. We can't hear you very well. Let's hold on just a minute. Okay. Go ahead, Randy.
That is correct. Starting Tuesday, the 26th, we will be allowing 15 customers in the building at one time. We're hopeful that all of our folks are coming back from furlough and will have the capacity to allow 15 customers inside the building.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I had.
Okay. Thank you, Randy, for being available. Other questions? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just one of the commissioners, so one of the commissioners added this screening idea that we would do temperatures. I think you get some comments that there were some concerns about people coming in from outdoors, wanting they're hot, and now how accurate that will be in that situation. I've been thinking about that. I think that's going to add to the bottleneck. I'm just concerned that no one comes to the courthouse that I'm aware of that doesn't have business here. They're here because they have business to conduct. And the public has a reasonable right to access their government. I think that the screening questions that you're asking are good enough, and I don't know that we ought to be doing the temperatures. We don't do temperatures at Dylan's or Lowe's or Walmart. People are only here because they have a reason to be here. And the questions are going to be enough, in my opinion, to do adequate screening. And so I would like to see us maybe not do the temperatures. I don't think it's necessary. That's my opinion. I don't know if anybody would also like to comment. I have a couple of other comments as well, but that's my first point.
Well, I would add that I've been over to the, to the city hall a number of times. And every time I go in there, they have a temperature thing. And I mean, it seems to be common. I mean, they check you out. Of course, I'm walking from here to there. I'm not sure I get that hot either. I don't, it seems okay to me, but I hear what you're saying.
Well, staff recommended yesterday that they would not do that. And their concern was that people coming in from outdoors, it's hot outside, maybe, you know, 95 degrees outside, they're walking some distance to get here. And, you know, if the temperature comes in, let's say it's a 90, you know, 99, what do you do then? What's the threshold for turning people away? It just, it really is, it is adding a lot of complexity. If someone is sick and the questions would ask you, are you sick? I think that that would be good enough. I think we ought to trust our citizenry. And I don't know that this temperature collection ought to necessarily be where we are turning people away from accessing government because of that. So I'm just concerned that that's going to be potentially unnecessary. I don't think it's necessary, I guess. And I think it's going to add to the bottleneck that we're going to see coming into the building.
Is this something that maybe we could start and then reevaluate if we do see a bottleneck happen? I think, you know, if we're erring on the side of caution, I think that it would be something to start with and then maybe reevaluate if we do see that it's not working. I think, would that be something you could agree with?
I just, I just don't think it's, you know, the public's going to lots of places right now. And they're not, most places that the public is going right now, they're not checking temperatures in most places. I don't think, I don't think we in this building ought to be scared of the public. If they're here, they're here for a reason. And you already have screening questions. I don't think, I just don't think this is necessary. And I think that we ought to trust our citizenry and they have a reasonable right to access our government. So they are here for a reason. We should help them conduct that business and protect our staff, give them the PPE. That keeps our staff safe, but the public ought to have a right to come into the building, I think.
Well, just because we ask for a temperature check doesn't mean we're scared of them. I think it's taking necessary precautions at the start of this. I mean, yesterday, you know, I mean, we just have to realize that this virus is still here. And just because we're opening things up doesn't mean that it's just going to go away automatically. So, I mean, if we could start it and then talk about it as we're going along and see if we're having a bottleneck. And I see your point, Commissioner Howell, but using words like scared, I don't think really help the situation any.
Okay. Well, I made my point. And I just want to say, I think that we ought to provide the PPE that's needed to protect our staff, to conduct business safely. And the public is going lots of places. They're going all over the community right now, and they're not being checked for temperatures generally. We're not asking for that anywhere. And so for us to implement that here, it to me is, it just is not necessary. So, anyway, I don't know if I need to make a motion or not, but I really feel like this is an unnecessary step.
Commissioner Dennis?
Well, I think we need to go back and check with our health professionals. The original recommendation yesterday was not to do that. And I think if we're going to err, we ought to err on the side of what our professionals tell us what's right. So if they don't believe that it's necessary, then I don't have a problem with not taking the temperatures. That was the original recommendation. Thank you.
That's a good suggestion. Can you just want to get with Dr. Menz and Adrian and see what their recommendation is?
Absolutely.
On that one. But I think we'd all be comfortable that way, even.
Well, again, one of my points is, I think that the public is getting pretty frustrated when they try to get into the building and it takes, there's a line outside because we're slowing the process down, and it takes them an hour to get into the building to conduct business. That, to me, is the concern. I think that, I don't know what to expect on Tuesday next week. But if that's what's going on, my opinion is, this is just an unnecessary step. And the public ought to be able to get into the building fairly easily. They already got to, they already have to go through a security screen. And they're going to ask them these health questions. And then you add a temperature on top of that, to me, it's just really going to slow things down. And so that's really my concern. I want to make sure the public has easy access to the government. And that's, this is just going to step too far. So that's my point. So I think talking to the health department's fine, but even if they think that the temperature's a good idea, I still stand by my earlier comments.
And Commissioner Howell, we're trying to make that screening process as efficient as we can so the public are not, is not waiting for a long period outside or through that line process.
I have a couple of other questions. I appreciate the signage graphics here, but I do agree with Commissioner Dennis. You didn't show a graphic for elevators in this building. So you just don't, you don't plan to post those signs in this building?
Correct. Because as long as everyone is adhering to wearing the mask while they're in this building, we will not have to put that maximum occupancy for the elevators in this building. Now, when we open up other buildings and if the public is not wearing those masks in those other buildings, we'll have to put in maximum occupancy for those elevators in the other buildings.
I have another question. So we have a lot of, the window of time is kind of broad on some of these opening dates. It says now through, and it's got a date in the future, now through July 3rd, for example.
Correct.
How does the public know what is open and what's not open, what to expect, what are the rules? Is all this posted somewhere that they can go and review that before they try to access government so they know what to expect before they get there?
These departments should have all of this information on our website as well as their departmental websites. So we need to be working with the departments to make sure that this information is on their website as well as our website. But hopefully, with this information going out today, we're going to be implementing this information on our website and getting this information out to the public.
All right. Thank you. That's all my questions.
Other questions?
One thing that I didn't see on here was a cleaning regimen. I mean, how often are we going to be cleaning handrails and buttons in elevators and those kinds of things? Door handles on the outside?
Yeah. And I don't know if I have the schedule, but I can tell you that we have implemented with our vendor to constantly be hitting those high points of touch. But I'll see if I can get a schedule to get that information out to you. Absolutely. And one comment I wanted to make, Commissioner, that you made yesterday is on our questionnaire to have additional information for those who get turned away, you know, because of the screening questionnaire. I talked to Ellen House, and she's going to add additional information on there that if you've been turned away to call nine, or excuse me, call 211 for COVID questions. So that's going to be implemented on that questionnaire, or on that return form for those that get turned away.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll propose a motion that would say, I move to approve this with the exception of the thermometer screening, I want to say, by the opinion of the health executive or health officer. So if the health officer says, let's go with it, fine. If it says it's not needed, fine. That's my intent. So I'll rephrase my motion, a motion to approve as presented with the opinion, to include the opinion on thermometers, thermometer use by the health official. Been a motion and second. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call her all.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Chairman Meisner?
Aye. Thank you, Tanya. Thanks for all the work you guys have done on this. Appreciate it. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item F, Discussion of the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Tom Stoltz, County Manager. We have three facets in this agenda item today. First, and this is a quickly moving, dynamic situation with the managing of the CARES dollars. Lindsey will give an update to start with regarding conversations she's had with our consultant and partner, Anis Whitel O'Brien. And they've also provided us with a program timeline that we'd like to introduce to you today and to the public, as we have promised transparency throughout this process. After the overview and any questions that you have of Lindsey, then we have two specific items that we're going to talk about regarding acquisition, utilizing CARES money. One is, and both of these are commission-driven, I might add. One is a mobile testing vehicle, which Tim Cofflin will present and give data on and be able to answer questions. And then we had a robust discussion yesterday concerning testing and specifically antibody testing. And Tim has some numbers with that as well. I had sent you a note earlier about EMS vehicle acquisition. I'd like to defer that for a short time. We have a little bit more research to do on that, and we will be contacting you. And we'll probably bring that back at the June 3rd meeting. So those three items for today. And with that, if you don't have any questions, we'll start with Lindsey.
Okay. I don't see any questions. So Ms. Lindsey, welcome to the meeting.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. Lindsey Poreso, your CFO. So yesterday, we had a call with Whitel O'Brien's to talk through where we were with our project with them. And so just as a reminder, we are using them for two primary purposes. First is to help us determine eligibility, essentially, of expenses under the CARES Act. And then also, they're assisting us with figuring out how to distribute those funds and manage them. And so we are working with them to try and put together what program you all want to offer. So many, many communities, states, counties, cities have received this funding. And So many, many communities, states, counties, cities have received this funding, and we have seen that almost all of them have unique components based on the needs that are perceived in their community. And so what this timeline does is it helps us put together a program that will be customized for us. And so what this shows is basically a graphic per week between now and you can see all the way to the end of January, even though CARES Act says for now, funding must be expended by December 30th. They'll basically help us make sure we've managed everything, documented everything, so that we hopefully are in a position not to have to return one penny back to the federal government because of any misuse of the funds. So what I think everyone is most interested in right now is what are we going to fund? And so the second line on the spreadsheet you have in front of you shows, describes it as develop program. And so what that means is, within the next few days, we will be working with Witt O'Briens to put together exactly what the need of, the needs are, how to solicit that. As they said on the phone call yesterday, we know their needs. Everybody needs money, but how much and for what? And so we'll be putting out that notice of funding opportunity and trying to solicit feedback from every area of the community, businesses, individuals alike, because we just need to know what's out there. And then we will use that information. They will help us collect that data and then distill it down into three to four core program areas. And so once we have identified those, you know, an example, of course, will be response. We want to make sure that we have testing. We want to make sure that our community has the ability to respond if there is another outbreak or if there's a cluster somewhere. So that will certainly be a program area that the county is interested in funding. But beyond that, what other areas are hardest hit and need the most help, but also are within the eligibility rules? So that's what that development of the program is. Then, the next order of business, once we have figured out who is going to receive the funding, we need to figure out how we're going to get that money to them. What kind of forms do we need? We need to look at, are they set up? Commissioner Howell, you had a question a week or so ago. Are they set up to receive those funds and spend them? Or is it something where the county maybe needs to act on their behalf to make that purchase? That does increase our administrative burden a bit if we do that, but that can be a policy choice that the commission makes if that's what we want to do. And so once we know that information, we can go out, collect the forms, do that capacity assessment to see if they're able to look at if there are any risk signs. Maybe they're a very well-established, large business with a lot of accounting folks on the team. So maybe they're a low risk. But maybe they're a, a brand-new entity. Maybe there's not a lot of history there for us to look at, and so maybe that's a bit of a higher risk. And so in that case, we would want to provide more support, more training, more information just to make sure that the commission is protected as the governing body that's, that's basically signed off on receiving these funds. So that subrecipient capacity assessment will be happening also as we're determining how we're going to distribute those dollars. We are working with Witt O'Briens to develop a grant portal, and so that will be the way in which, at least for now, until we see what the subrecipient group looks like, how we plan to accept documents, how we plan to push out information, frequently ask questions, policies and procedures. It will be a central spot for everyone to go through, and it will be ideal for us because it will capture all of that information in one place, which should then make our reporting to the federal government and to auditors much, much simpler. So you'll see that that's happening. And then you can see there's a lot of policies, processes and procedures, all of those things that we'll be doing once we get through that initial phase to make sure that we have everything in place, how we want to receive that information, what expectation of reporting we have, what level of detail do you all want versus maybe what detail that external expense reimbursement group wants. Then we'll have agreements whereby basically we say, we don't want you to come after this funding and also at the same time seek FEMA funding. We want to make sure they're not supplanting, right? So taking their operating revenue, or taking their operating expenditures and replacing them with this money unless it's authorized. Nor do we want folks to use this for things that maybe isn't, aren't eligible. Again, at the end of the day, we want to protect the commission and make sure that even though we're giving this money away to others, that since we are still on the hook, that we have adequate protections for you. And so we'll have technical assistance happening during all of this. We have BKD, who is our external auditor, even though they're not acting as our auditor in this function, who will be training us and training subrecipients at the exact same time, just to make sure that we, we are fully prepared if this turns out to be a single audit, which is where they look at federal money we get, or if it's an IG audit, depending on what we're facing, they want to make sure we are well-prepared to handle that. And so I think this process is great. This is the first step. With Witt O'Briens, they asked if we could do, or three times weekly calls, so Monday, Wednesday, Friday, just to make sure we're all hitting our benchmarks and succeeding. And so I have a high level of confidence that we will get where you all want to be. It's just going to take a few more weeks. And so I think Tom's expectation is that we'll continue to come back and brief you during these Wednesday meetings or via email if you don't have a weekly meeting. And certainly feel free to let us know if you have questions that we can pass along. They've already started assisting us with eligibility determinations as we've been getting requests, at least internally, just so that we know and can respond quickly. So I think that's what I have to share with you unless there's anything you want to know about that I'm not addressing.
Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a couple of questions. Number one, is it, is it our understanding that some of this money can be granted out to nonprofits or, or businesses due to lost revenue that they're dealing with or operational challenges because of what they're trying to accomplish, providing services to the community, but they've had lost revenue because of COVID-19?
So my understanding is that folks have used this funding in other communities to do what are called business interruption grants. That is not necessarily to replace lost revenue. It's more to try and help them get back on their feet so that they can reopen quickly. And most places where that's happening, it's targeted at small businesses. We haven't had a discussion yet about how that would look for nonprofits, but I anticipate that that will certainly come up. That will be a group that we target when we go out with this notice of funding opportunity to see exactly what it is that they think they need, and then we can see if there's a way to address that and bring that back to you all as a policy consideration.
So can you give an example, like, for example, say a business says we need to have a certain amount of PPE or whatever that, or some, some sneeze guards, whatever they're called, that would be that type of, that type of grant to cover those types of items?
So what, we have heard two examples I can speak to specifically. One is out of St. Louis, Missouri County, and there they are authorizing, I believe it's up to $15,000 essentially to provide them funding to reopen, to safely reopen. Again, with the idea that that will spur some economic development and, and try and get the economy back on its feet. So that's one example. Another example is pretty similar to that, but a much, it's not a cap, it's just a, basically a reimbursement. If you want to go and buy sneeze shields, or if you want to buy additional tables to space things out, or if you want to buy masks for your employees for small restaurants or those types of things, then they can come in and say, here's exactly what we're going to buy, and they'll approve it. And so I can't remember which county it was, but we have seen that listed as a potential option that other places have already put into place.
Well, your first example is, has Witt O'Brien opined on that type of, that type of a grant that would simply be cash, a cash grant to a business to get opened as soon as possible?
I think they, they have said that is definitely an acceptable use of the CARES funds. I think what they want us to do first is to find out what are the greatest needs in the community, for our particular community, put together our three or four core program areas, and then identify funds, and then they would help us with that program. So I just don't think we're quite to that part in the process yet.
Well, perhaps we ought to at least communicate to our businesses that if they have expenditures that are related to their reopening that would be qualified, they ought to keep track of that and separate that out so they can apply for reimbursement when the time comes.
And I think as part of that notice of, of funding opportunity, we do intend, I think Tom and I were just talking about this last night, to get it out to the chamber and those folks to, to get on the radars for businesses to see what is it that you need so that we can solicit the type of information and how much. So it's not just for what, but how much, so we can get an idea, especially since the CARES guidance on how we can spend this funding, we know continually changes.
One of our cities contacted me yesterday, and they said that they believe that they had heard, I'm not sure how they, how they heard this, but maybe it's in the news, I just, I have not seen it myself. But they said that Johnson County actually essentially divvied up their, their grant, essentially allocating certain parts of that to each city based on, I assume, population or something. I assume something similar to the one cent sales tax distribution. In other words, they would say to a city, you know, this is your share of the funds. If you have qualified expenditures, you know, simply this is how much money you should probably look to be spent in your community. I think we would still have to manage the risk aspect of this, or the, you know, the verification, qualification aspect of this, but it essentially would allow a city to know about how much money they would have available to them. And I'm not sure exactly how Johnson County did that or what exactly they did do, but do we have information on that?
I don't know what Johnson County has done, but Witt O'Briens on our call yesterday did mention that there are some different methodologies that they are aware of that have been used to basically put some caps for equity based on population across, you know, the different types of cities and/or townships. And so they gave us a couple of different models we can use, and that will be a part of developing that program once we hear back on what the, the needs assessment is, what those communities need, because they can also be seeking public assistance right now for a lot of that PPE. And so I think we, we will just want to be very deliberate, you all as the policymakers, about whether you want to fund that type of thing or if you want to ask them to seek public assistance for that and use these dollars for a different use. But I can certainly find out from Johnson County what they've done.
And we checked with them a couple of days ago. They were not there yet on that kind of model. As Lindsey said, Witt is telling us a lot of different scenarios and models, but I don't think Johnson County had reached the point yet where they'd made that decision, at least a couple of days ago. That may have changed between now and then. We'll check, get an update on it.
I certainly want to be careful. I appreciate the thoughtful, the thoughtful way that we're, you know, taking care of this, but I do want to be, you know, as aggressive as possible, safely, to, to hopefully get that money available to the recipients so it can be used as soon as possible. That's really the point. It doesn't do any good if it's in our account. It only does good if it gets out to where it can do something in the community, so.
Well, and if I could follow up on that, Witt O'Briens has said that in some communities they are actually doing some advanced funding for those smaller governments, basically identifying a small, a portion of the funds and making that available immediately. I think the hesitation that I expressed to them was based on what I've heard in these commission meetings where we, we want to have that accountability for every dollar that goes out. And so if we kind of, if we give that advanced funding, just making sure that you all have that proper assurance that it will be spent on the eligible expenses, and so we're not having to be in a position where we're clawing back any funding down the road. And so I think if we can get through that three to four-week process to try and solicit those needs, I think then we can be in a position to have an intelligent answer for what you're trying to do. I just don't have enough information today to give you a good recommendation.
Okay. Thank you.
Karen. Yeah. Commissioner Cruz.
So at what point does the stimulus review team come into this?
So Brent Shelton is the chair of that team of the expenditure reimbursement group. Is that the one you're talking about, the external group?
Yes.
Okay. So they-
Is that what we're calling it?
Yes.
Because last week it was the stimulus review team.
Correct. It's the seven. It's the, it's the, it's the oversight group. That's a component of this.
Sorry, we have an internal group and an external group. I just want to make sure I'm, I'm calling it the right thing and answering the right question. But from that external group, Brent is actually reaching out to those folks today now that we have kind of a timeline to give them a heads up on what we're seeing and what we're thinking. And then we'll schedule training with them. BKD is putting that together for us, our, our review team members as well as the subrecipients. And so as soon as they have that developed, we'll get all of them in a space, whether it's virtually or in person, and we'll get that training together. And then we'll stand them up to review based on whatever policy provisions you all put out there.
Okay. So last Friday, we had a meeting with the Wichita Black Alliance, and they had a request to add additional folks to this stimulus review team to have more minority representation. I said that I would bring this back to the board for discussion. It looks like there is one African-American member. I don't believe there's, I mean, I think the, the representation on this board could better reflect our community, and I'd like to discuss that. So these three names that they had asked for, I guess, do I need to make a motion to request?
Well, you've said you wanted to have a discussion and you want to do a motion?
No, let's have a discussion.
Whatever, whatever your preference is.
I think Commissioner O'Donnell.
Yeah. I am not in favor of opening that back up. I had to ask the manager to look at some other people, and he said we all approved having seven people, so I just dropped it. So I, I don't believe now that we've already started. The process is appropriate to add more people.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. And I, I also asked the manager as we were going through this, I said, I've got some names, and he said it's already been established, so I dropped it. So that's where it's at. If we're going to start adding names, yep, I've got names.
I've got three names, too.
Okay. So what would, what will be the process for the discussion that is had with this stimulus, stimulus review team? You know, when the decision is made, say at any board, say at, you know, my citizens' advisory board. I have a board of members, but I also have community members who are able to come to my board and have inputs, hear the discussion. How will the community, if we do not expand this board, how will the community be able to hear these discussions and actively participate?
So I will tell you the way it is envisioned today, and then Tom can correct me on anything I misstate. So what we would essentially do is send that group the list of requests that we receive through that grant portal, hopefully at least on a weekly basis initially, maybe less often as we get through this. And so that group would simply be asked to determine whether it's eligible or not, and then they would make a recommendation on that eligibility to you all. So it will come to the commission for actual approval, and so I might recommend that that would be the time to have that discussion is when it's coming to you all for, for actual endorsement or not. I don't know that we have necessarily built this to try and figure out if it's, you know, expanding a policy or not. It's going to be after the policy's established, whether it conforms to what you all have said, you approve, and then whether it's eligible under the federal rules. And so that is, that is the role of that team today. You all as the board will have the final approval, and so that might be the time to bring in the public, in my opinion, but I don't know if Mike or Tom think that's wrong.
We, we've talked about this. And first of all, let me go back to, we had a number of good people that we could put on an advisory board like this. Many recommended by commission, many recommended by staff. You can look at any book of advisory boards or how to manage a group of people to make what are going to be hard policy decisions, and they recommend a number between seven and 10. A bigger group than that becomes ineffective and too noisy, and less than that doesn't, doesn't give enough breath. So we settled on a number of seven or eight, and we tried to fill that with people who had specific skills and some acts, you know, knowledge of government, knowledge of money, knowledge of accounting. And then with Wichita being as big as it is, it just made sense to put a city Wichita person on, which is why Mark Manning was put on that board. And we have 20 Class II and III cities, so it was important to put a member on that represented that group because they're a stakeholder in this. So we, we did the best we could. We've now since discussed how we publicly, because we've, we've promised transparency on this, how publicly people can watch this happen. And it can happen in two ways, either or, or it can happen in both. One of them is when this advisory board meets and discusses, that should be considered, like many of our other advisory boards, a public meeting. So we're trying to think of a mechanism through WebEx or social media or telephone, how that meeting can be opened so that people can watch the discussion and perhaps comment on that discussion. So that's one thing that we're looking at. And the second is what Lindsey just talked about. It comes back to this board for final decision anyway. And we're also looking, I might add, at a way to involve public in these meetings again and get back to a more normal on how we're running these commission meetings instead of this email approach that we're using now. We, we have to come up with something better. So I think that citizens, we're going to try to craft a way that citizens can have two points of, of input. Number one, some point of input with the advisory board and some point of input with this commission. And we'll craft those over the next few days. I, I'm hoping, and I haven't talked to Brent, but I'm hope, our next meeting is June 3. I'm hoping by that time this group will be stood up, and I'm hoping that Brent will be able to come in and kind of talk about a plan of action for that particular group in addition to what Lindsay's already said. They have to be trained. We have to acclimate them on what you just saw today for the first time, and we all just saw late last night for the first time. So we bring this group in, we acclimate them to the process, create their policies on how they're going to operate, and then we open that up to the public. So that's a long answer to your question, Commissioner, but we're going to try to give it two, two ways for people to access the information.
Thank you. I think it's important that we make sure that, I mean, the, the stats all around the country and even in our own community, black and brown people are highly affected by this, and I think it's important that we take that into account and we make sure that their voices are at these tables. I would prefer us not wait till it just comes to the commission. I think it needs to be the step before. And the $25,000 that we appropriated last week for the communications portion of this, we're obviously going to need to bolster that, but I think it's important for us to reach those communities that, we talk about the chamber, they do great work, but they don't hit everybody in our community. And so it's important for us to utilize all mediums to ensure that those, those populations of people are reached, they are communicated to, and they are heard from. So that's my main, I, I really want to stress that. I think it's important that all voices are included because we have to, we have to make sure that people are aware and their voices are heard.
I think, I think we can do that.
Yeah, and I, I agree. And it's, this is a challenge for us to get this, get this done countywide and wherever all the needs are, are needed. And I kind of personally feel that there's a little bit of a, the vulnerable, another one of the real vulnerable populations per data is the elderly. And I know that, I don't know if it's expanded Meals on Wheels or increased protection equipment for the elderly, but they really are hitting, getting hit, and they're vulnerable, not even to us, but this is nationwide, so, and other vulnerable populations. I have a question to, to Lindsay that you, Commissioner Howes, a question about, is this a thing where we, I'm going to paraphrase, we, we give the money to a recipient, or do we make the purchases on behalf of the recipients? I, I kind of like that, but I'm not sure if, I'd be interested as, as you look into this, that, I'm not sure that you can universally do that if somebody's saying, hey, if we'd end up doing a $1,000 reopening thing, whatever, but, and how to monitor that. But I'd be curious what Whit O'Brien would be saying related to that as their best practices.
I think we can make the decision on how to do that either way. I think some entities, particularly, you know, City of Wichita, I conceive being a recipient of this funding, they probably don't want us making those purchases on their behalf, although we're happy to. And they have the capacity to handle that. Whereas maybe when we get to some of the smaller townships and some of those things, there are some procurement rules that come often with federal funding, and so it may be more prudent for us and easier for them to go ahead and make those purchases on behalf and then give them to them. It, it does increase our administrative burden because then we will need to go and follow through, but again, as a policy decision for commissioners, if, if you all are okay with that, then that's certainly something we can pursue. So I think we'll, we'll get to that after we hear back from the communities about what they need and how they want to handle it.
Well, my observation is your, your timeline. Thank you for the chart. You've obviously, this is new territory for us all, so thank you for at least putting this footprint out here. Looks like, looks like it's quite a chore for a number of people.
It will be fun for all of us. We're going to be really, really smart on the back end of this.
We could follow up. I, I can follow up with, with, with the, with our friends at Johnson County to see how, how they're going through it, especially since they're the only other entity that received direct funding. So it's probably worth, I mean, you have your contacts as well. I'll, I'll, we'll try to find out from the, from the commission and the, and the chair, where, where they're leaning and-
That's great.
What obstacles and just to provide feedback. Okay.
Out of curiosity, are they using Whit O'Briens as well?
I don't know that they are yet, but I haven't talked with them on this in at least a week and a half, so I need to follow up, and I can get an answer to that question.
Speaking of that, can you tell, you, you mentioned before, how many, how many entities is Whit O'Brien handling around the country about?
I, I don't know. I'll ask them. I don't want to speak for them.
Because people have asked me that, too.
A lot.
And so, yeah, a lot is a good answer, but-
But I'll get you a precise answer, a better answer, for sure.
Obviously, probably anything over 500,000, I assume, population.
Oh, I know, I know California, state of California for sure is one of their clients on this. So I think they're handling everything from the smallest like us, where we just barely met that threshold, up to some of the largest.
That'd be helpful to know.
No problem.
So Commissioner Dennis, did you have a question? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Commissioner Howes?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what the appropriate time is. We don't have on the agenda today to discuss COVID-19, and I know the state just changed their, their order yesterday that's going to change, if you will, again, what, what's allowed and what's not allowed through the state of Kansas this coming Friday. And so with that, we don't really have an opportunity to discuss that as a board because it's not on the agenda, but this is about the closest thing we've got on the agenda. So I don't know if this is an appropriate time to have a small discussion, if you will, about some COVID-19 things. I actually would like to make a couple of small motions here and see if we have some discussion about a couple of things, if that's okay. Is this, is this an appropriate time to do that?
Well, I, I don't think, let's do it as another off agenda item after this is over.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is the, my, my part of this presentation, so is there any other information I can provide for you?
No.
Okay, I will follow up on that information you request, and I'll turn it over to Tim.
Do we have to receive and, okay, I'm sorry, Tim's coming in.
Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager. Like last week, I have a specific request, and then I have some conversation, or some information for consideration as well. At the last meeting, we talked about the desire to have a, a mobile testing option available, and so we've done some research, worked with Penny Poland in the, in Fleet Management. She's done a great job in helping us track down a potential vehicle. And so I have a request for a specific dollar figure that we would like to get approval to expend through the COVID, the CARES funding, and that includes $28,543 for a van that Fleet has identified. That includes the acquisition of the van, modifying the seats, and then some, then they're going to need to do some additional modification of safety features, but they'll be able to do that in-house. And then three positions, a registered nurse, a medical assistant, and a fiscal associate. The personnel cost is $103,639, $28,543 for that vehicle, and then $72,000 for supplies and equipment associated with operating the mobile testing team. And so my request would be that we authorize additional expenditures from the CARES funding for those purchases so that we can get that mobile testing team up and operational as quickly as possible.
Yes.
Do we have a plan as to where this mobile testing site will be put?
Well, as I tried to describe yesterday, we, we continue, we need to do a little more data analysis and make sure that we're targeting it towards areas of the community that are transportation challenged, and so we're still analyzing that data. But we anticipate that we will cover the entire county, but we want to focus particularly initially on those areas that have the most challenges related to transportation.
Is there a way that you could kind of just really quickly explain how you, how do you, how do you determine transportation-challenged areas?
There are two different metrics that we intend to use. One is a study by the University of Texas, I cannot recall the name of the study, that looks at what they call transportation islands, and so it's areas where people have less access to transportation. And so that's kind of a national analysis that applies to counties across the country. We'll use that data, and we will pair it with some local data, because our Department on Aging, the CPA also manages a transportation brokerage for rural transportation, and so they are aware of the number of calls and requests that they receive from individuals who need transportation to, particularly medical, they do a large number of medical appointment transportations, and so we feel like that's good data, that, that's current, and it's our data specific to what folks in our community are experiencing. And so we'll use those two metrics to help us identify the order in which we want to offer this mobile site.
So what has the, the 211 questions that are being asked? Last week I had asked that a, a transportation-specific question was asked? Do we have that data?
I don't have that data back yet, but I'll try and get that this week and get it sent out to you. My impression from conversations is that there are relatively few transportation needs, but we believe that this approach would also address any of those folks who may not have called because they didn't feel like they had transportation.
Is there a way that you can get me the list of questions that are asked, you know, just short of me calling 211 and doing it myself? But, I mean, I wonder how they're asking what their transportation needs are.
And remember, there's two points of contact. So there's the 211 contact, and if they're referred to the health department, then there's a health department contact, too. So both of those stop points, particularly the last stop, the health department stop, would begin to ask about appointments and transportation and can they make it? So there's a couple of points. But yes, to your, to your, to your question, we can get you the list of questions 211 asked, but I think that the health department asks probably are a lot more broad-scope in nature, because now they know that they've got somebody who has passed the litmus of 211, and we, we are probably going to be setting them up with appointment. There could be discussion during those dialogues of transportation and how you're going to get from point A to point B. We'll, we'll get you both those pieces of information.
Thanks.
Commissioner Howes?
Just to be clear, the, the plan for finding people who will be tested on this mobile test unit, they'll go through the same process of calling 211, being screened, if you will, by, by those folks and having an appointment set up. And so can we talk about what is the, what is the number of hours they're spending over there on the, at our, at our main test site? How many hours per day or per week are we actually testing people over there at this point?
It's dependent upon the number, the volume of folks that get scheduled from the day before, but generally that it takes about three hours. If they're scheduling anywhere between 80 and 120 folks, they can usually run those through in about three or three and a half hours. And to your first question, yes, we will. What we'll do is we'll notify a community in advance. We use our communications department and any other tools that we have available to us, notify that community that in addition to the West Central site, we will be in Community A or Community B or Community C on a date in the future, and that if they prefer to be tested at that location, call 211 and go through the screening process, and we'll get them scheduled that way.
If someone needs to be tested, though, we don't want them to, to, to delay that testing just because, you say, well, we're going to be in this, you know, whatever city, you know, three or four days from now. We don't want them to delay that testing, do we?
Well, it would certainly depend on their symptoms, but that would be part of the process that the scheduler would go through. Once they got through the 211 call, then they're going to talk to the nurse triage line, and the nurse triage line's going to help them figure out what's best for them, whether it's to, for us to arrange transportation to get them in earlier, or if they're in a situation where they may be able to wait.
So at the, at the West Central location, how many, how many people could be, are there multiple lines of people being tested at the same time, or is that a serial process?
No, we, depending on the volume that's scheduled and the volume of staff available, we're running either three or four lanes.
Okay. While I'm supportive of the mobile testing, I still like to stress that I, I don't think the people should delay being tested because, because the, the testing unit will be near them at some future date. I think that's not the right strategy here. If they need to be tested, they need to be tested, and, and to the extent that we, we talked a little bit about making sure we have transportation available, so if someone needs to get to a test site, wherever they are and wherever the test site is, we would go pick them up at their door and take them to a test site and then deliver them back home. And that's happening now and has been going on for several weeks. So the mobile testing's really not solving a, a new problem. We actually have a solution in place right now. So again, I'll support the mobile testing idea. That's, that's no problem. I don't know that it's actually solving a problem, however. So I think it's fine for us to do this.
I think the, the mobile testing gives us a couple of capacities. One, when that person calls, when they're referred to the health department, in other words, they're showing symptom and they pass the litmus of 211, and they call the health department, that person can then say, you can go to West Central, or they'll have a list right there, the mobile unit is at XYZ, it's at Plainview Park today. So which of those locations is more convenient for you? And let the customer choose, so to speak. But, and to your point, true, if they can't do either, then we have a transportation solution for them. We will go pick them up and deliver them back home. So I, I think it gives more options for clients. And that's, and that's under the current way we're doing business today, and we're going to talk about testing next, so, but there's, I think the future of testing might look a bit different, particularly if we can assure that our supply chain continues to deliver supply. I think it offers an interesting discussion about what the health department might migrate to in the very near future regarding testing protocol. It could be that the mobile testing vehicle is at a location and can take anybody, that we don't have to be symptomatic. Maybe it's going to, we'll take all comers to that location for a certain time, depending on our supply and load and depending on if it helps us to get strategy on combating the virus within the community. So I, I think it offers us capacity to do more and be better for people.
Did I hear correctly that we did about 400 tests or so in the last week at our West Central? I think that's what I heard, around that number roughly. And I think the Health Corps site over at WSU did about double that, about 800 or so. I think that's about right. And I understand that they actually have had trouble getting through all their, through the, through the whole line that has showed up. They've had some, some, I guess, inability to, to provide testing to everybody because of the, the large number of people over there, and we have capacity left over. So I guess that to me is a, is a concern. Do we know whether that long line at WSU is continuing to this day, or is that something that just happened for a few days? Do we know that?
I don't know the answer to that.
It was long yesterday, I heard.
Okay. Well, I, I guess I'll just say again, I, I think that we ought to, we have 11,000, yesterday was, it was briefly, we have 11,700 test kits in our possession. The most we've ever done in a week is about 500 tests. I think we need to open up the, the criteria to get more tests available to the public. We have capacity. I would say over at the West Central location, on, on video I've seen, on some of the news clips I've seen, I actually counted them, about 20 people standing there and providing some staff assistance to make that operation work. You're talking about potentially three people on this mobile test site, but we have capacity. I think that we ought to open up the criteria and use those, majority of those test kits ought to be utilized as soon as possible. So I don't know what we can do to make that happen, but if this mobile test site will help us get to asymptomatic testing, that, that to me will be another, number one reason to, to support this.
And I think it, it sets you up for if you get in, if we get into random testing determined by, you know, zip code or hot zones or whatever.
Do you want us to go, should we start talking about testing, or do you want, how do you want to handle? I think Lindsay's parts are receive and file. I think Tim's parts are going to require a vote, however you want to handle it, Chairman.
Okay, okay. Well, let's receive and file, motion to receive and file Lindsay's report. I'll, I'll make that motion. Okay, I'm going to motion in a second. No other comments on Lindsay's report. Thank you, Lindsay. Please. It's just Lindsay's report, it's not- Correct. It's just Lindsay's report. So Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howes?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye. Okay, so we've got that done. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. I guess what my concern is with what you've briefed us on this mobile testing is the I don't know what this van looks like whatsoever, or if it's got the capacity, it's got three people. It doesn't sound like what I had in my mind when I asked for us to start reviewing this, because what I had in my mind was we could go out and do mass testing if we needed to with a, a mobile unit, for example. Clearwater, we can talk about that, because that's something that we've, we've experienced. If we had a large nursing home like at Clearwater, that we could go in with that van and test everybody in there and all the employees, and we'd have the capacity to do that. If we see a, an area in our community that's underserved, that we could get in there and have the capacity to do that. We saw that Health Corps went in and did 800 in one week. We haven't come close to that, and we have a huge fixed facility. So I, I don't see how that this, I don't know what you're looking at, but $20,000 doesn't sound like a very big unit, and three people, can they do 200 a day with that?
They may not be able to hit 200.
Can they do 100 a day?
They could probably do 100 in a day.
With three people in this van that you're in?
Well, there would be some additional staff as well. These are additional staff that we would need to meet the, the request for a mobile testing approach. We'd add some of, some additional staff that are part of the fixed site. We'd pull them off of their normal duties and have them do, participate in some- and have them do, participate in some of this mobile testing as well.
We were briefed yesterday, we got 11,700, I think, test units available right now. If we tested 1,000 a week, you've got 11 weeks of supplies sitting there and you've got 10,000 more on order. Our testing is so far lagging that it's unbelievable for the county health department. And then the proposal you brought to me, first of all, it doesn't sound like it has the capacity to do what I envisioned, and that's to get our testing up and to be able to get out to the community and make sure that everyone that needs a test has a test, and then as we move forward, to get some asymptomatic testing done. So I don't know. I don't know that I, I was the one that was pushing for this mobile testing, and I don't know what you're proposing right now. So I don't know that I can support it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Let's talk a little bit, Tim, about the logistics of how a mobile test site would operate. And I think to get to Commissioner Dennis's concern, if you have a mobile test site, it is still a drive-through capacity. We are not getting people out of a car to go set inside a vehicle to test them. It is a function to where you can mobily move a group, a work team out, and have people drive through, stay in their vehicles, just like they do at West Central, and test them. It's all a question now of capacity of how many people do you want to send out there? And it depends on what the number is. If you want to test 100 a day, you need X amount of people. You want 200 a day, X amount of people. If you've got an outbreak and you want to test 500 a day, X amount of people. The vehicle serves as a place to, you transport your people out in it, but it serves as a place to keep equipment, have power, have water, have the supplies necessary to run. And correct me if I'm wrong on any of this, but that's the function of the vehicle. As far as having a larger vehicle, it's still going to be a drive-through capacity, though. Every mobile situation that we've seen is still drive-through capacity, correct?
Correct. And the other function that this vehicle would serve is that it would allow us to transport individuals who are symptomatic, if they're not able to get to the West Central site, if timing isn't right for them to approach a mobile site. This would be a safe vehicle to transport people who are symptomatic. We continue to need to protect our staff, and that's part of the reason why when you do testing of symptomatic folks is you have them remain in their car so that you minimize their exposure to others. And so what you described is what we would envision. This vehicle would serve two purposes. One would be to transport testing equipment into a community so that we can do testing in that location, and the other would be to help transport individuals who need to be tested to a place where testing is available. And we believe that this van would hold the equipment that we need to go into another community and set up a testing site if we needed to.
So going back to my discussion yesterday, I still want to see a plan on how we're going to get testing going. Is that something we're going to talk about today, or when are we going to talk about it?
Well, I think next week, I hope by the end of next week, we'll be able to send out information about locations where we would do our mobile testing site, and by then we should have information back so that we can talk about asymptomatic testing. Right now, I believe that we have the capacity to test people who need to be tested based on what we see the throughput at 211 is. Folks that are symptomatic have an opportunity to either call us at the health department or their healthcare provider and get tested. We've got, as it's been pointed out, we have excess capacity right now. So people who need to be tested right now because they're feeling symptoms, we're able to test them. Now, we also want to increase the amount of testing across the community, and that's where we get into the randomized statistically significant testing of asymptomatic individuals. We've been in contact with a couple of people. We're putting together that plan. We'll have that plan available. We'll share it with you as soon as it's fully developed, but I'm still waiting on some quotes back from some folks that we need to rely on to help make that happen.
So if we say yes with this proposal you just brought forward to us, you're going to guarantee me we're going to do at least 100 tests a day out of this mobile vehicle plus whatever we can get done out of the fixed facility?
I wish I could make that guarantee to you, but I can't guarantee you how many people are symptomatic in a particular community when we go there. I just don't know.
I think we can guarantee capacity, Commissioner.
Certainly, I can guarantee capacity.
It depends on how, and the next discussion we're going to have is on the philosophy of testing and how that's changing, because all of a sudden now we seem to have supply chain that's steady. I think we can say we would have capacity to do hundreds of tests using that mobile site, depending on how many staff you shoot out there with it. In today's world, which the KDHE, remember, we're a subsidiary of KDHE. The health department is an outreach for KDHE. The testing of symptomatic people today, I don't know that we can guarantee if we do a dozen out there. Depending on where it's at, you have to have a number of symptomatic people in that area that are willing or want to go be tested. What gets interesting is when you start talking about asymptomatic testing, which is where several of you commissioners want to go, and that is the concept of the randomized testing every couple, three weeks. And you look at your supply, and if we could get to a point where every two weeks we do 1,500 random tests out in the community, that is comprehensive and strategic in nature, then you could use that mobile vehicle and go out and do, and help you achieve that. And I think that Tim will present a plan to get that. Then I think that's within the realm of possibility now, based on the test supply that we have currently and that we hope will continue to be supplied to us. So, I mean, if we're talking about guaranteeing capacity, I think we could say that the mobile health vehicle will help us get to a capacity of whatever the community requires in Sedgwick County. About the best we can do.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I think that Health Corps has set a really great precedent for us to follow. You know, they have, I mean, yesterday when I drove by their operation, seems like they got something good that we could mimic. Is that something that, I'd like to see us do that. I mean, it's already up and running. If, I mean, I like the strategic way that you're going with the random sampling. I think that it's a good idea to understand how this virus is spread in our community, but just because someone gets tested, and whether they test positive or negative for it, and let's say they're negative, it doesn't mean that they're, they can't get it again. Or if they're positive and they're feeling fine, I just don't want these tests to create a false sense of security that people in this community can't get it. Or I guess what I'm trying to say is, yes, let's do testing. Yes, we have the capacity. I completely agree with you. But I would love for our communication efforts to talk about how just because we are doing all of this testing and we see, you know, asymptomatic carriers out there, it doesn't mean that everything is okay. And I think that's what we really need to make sure that people understand, is go get tested. If you test negative, that's just one time, it doesn't mean that you can't get it again, or that you can't get it, right? So I don't understand why we wouldn't just model after Health Corps. That's one. And then if it's going to take us, you know, two weeks or so to get the random sampling from the companies that you're, I mean, why wouldn't we just prop up something like what Health Corps is doing?
I'll take a shot.
To make a long story short.
Health Corps tested over 800 people. Do we know how many positives they had of that?
They had five.
Yeah, the data that I have says they, we have results back on 646 that were tested. They tested over, I think, over 900, but we don't have all the data back on that. Had five positives out of that number.
And four of those people didn't have any symptoms at all.
Asymptomatic. So first of all, let me, we are partners with Health Corps. They are part of a community strategy for testing, as are a number of other locations, and the health department tests 20 to 25% of the total tests in the county. So we're not in a competition with them, we're in a collaboration with them. Secondly, I think as the county health moves forward and we decide to move into randomized testing, that can go one of two ways. We can do a strategic sampling where we make an assertive effort to make sure every zip code and every demographic is covered, because we are the county health department. We are not a private entity. We, all of the people in Sedgwick County, we serve them. So our model has to be one that is comprehensive toward the county. So I think we should keep that in mind as we move forward. And then secondly, when you get the results back, to me, the Health Corps data becomes useful to us when we can pinpoint, what zip codes did they test, how many negatives, and look and begin to map that. And as we move our plan forward, I think we need to be cognizant of that and make sure that all of our zip codes are represented in our analysis. Is it possible that we maybe open West Central or we open the mobile unit on a Friday afternoon and say, hey, anybody that wants tested? You know, no symptoms, need a, what Health, the model? Absolutely. We could, I think we could look at that if we have the test supply. So there's a number of things we can do moving forward, but I think we have to, our goal should be, as a county, to get the best comprehensive data possible that represents all of our populations, and then utilize that to figure out where our hotspots were at or where the infection is operating within the county. So, Tim, did you want to add anything to that? And then just the tangibility, the technicality of how Health Corps, absolutely, we should run, if they're successfully running a line, if they have a vehicle that we should take a look at, absolutely, we can take a look and model whatever they're doing. But I don't know that our actual testing should be exactly like theirs. They're taking care of a niche clearly, but we have to be more comprehensive in our thought process, maybe. Tim, I'm sorry.
No, I don't disagree with anything that you said. I think that the work that they're doing is important in partnership with the work that we're doing, in partnership with the work that's being done in private physician offices and at the hospitals as well. The more data, the better. There are specific types of data that we need to help us as we plan for the future. They're getting good information on, right now it appears primarily asymptomatic population. We want to get to that as well, but we want to take a little bit more structured approach to it than what they've taken. Not that there's a problem with either. I think both approaches are helpful and will help us get additional test data.
Okay. Any other comments? I guess before we leave mobile testing, I haven't seen the van myself, Commissioner. Perhaps the commission could consider an allocation of up to a certain amount of money to prop up mobile testing, which would give Tim a little bit of wiggle room on the type of vehicle, and maybe allow us to look for other solutions to maybe meet more what Commissioner Dennis had in mind. So maybe if you could at least let us get that process started so that we could begin to acquire the vehicle and get the openings for the staff positions out, maybe that's something, if we could get a vote on that today, to get a green light to move forward.
My experience in buying larger things is that the large diner on the food trucks, those things can run up to 50,000 bucks. Is that what you need, is a motion up to 50,000? Would that cover the gamut?
Could cover the vehicle. I've got some staff involved as well.
Okay. Well, I just threw that out there, Commissioner Dennis. It sounds like you need 70,000 or 80,000 for personnel. Is that correct?
I've got 100, almost 104 in personnel.
104 for personnel.
28.5 for the vehicle and 7,200 for equipment and supplies.
Well, I want us to get something that serves the community. That's our goal, the entire community, all of Sedgwick County. So if you can find something that meets the needs of Sedgwick County, I'd make a motion that we approve up to 250,000 to take a look at the vehicle and personnel.
Second. Motion and second is on the floor. Any other comments? Being done, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Halt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meisner?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. What else we got?
I do have a little bit of information. We talked yesterday some about antibody testing. I do have a little bit of information. I don't know that it's developed enough to where I've got a specific ask for you, but we did talk to two of the vendors that we use right now for testing and got price estimates. One of the vendors did not have the test supplies available yet, anticipated them sometime next month. The other one gave us a price range between 50 and 80 dollars per test, and the other one was estimating they don't have a firm price. We couldn't get quotes from either right now of 80 dollars per test. And so testing supplies, depending on the volume that we were, it would scale from there, that's the price that we've heard right now. But again, there is a little bit of an availability issue, at least from the vendors that we're working with right now. And so we could certainly do that. We've also had an opportunity to talk with, yesterday, Tom and I were introduced to an idea that WSU has. They're working, their innovation campus is working on the possibility of a high-volume testing option as well. Tom and I haven't had a chance to get any details on that. We'd like to talk to them as well. That may be a different option to allow to do some high-volume testing as well. So we're starting to get prices on some of these other testing options. I don't know that I have specific enough information to formulate an ask for you right now. One of the other things that we did was we checked with the other large counties in Kansas, and none of the other county, we didn't hear back from Wyandotte, but the other large counties in Kansas all indicated that they are not, right now, planning to do antibody testing for some of the reasons that we discussed yesterday. They're in a kind of wait-and-see mode, like we are, we're waiting to see as things become more clear on how effective that is and what really that tells you. So we've done some research, but I don't have, I don't feel like I have enough information to be able to ask, to make an ask for you right now.
And just to summarize, testing, so currently, the nasal swab methodology, which is what the health department uses and what Health Corps is using, that is testing for the virus. So that's today's technology. And if you look at video from around the world, everybody seems to be using the same technology. The antibody testing that Commissioner Dennis brought up yesterday is another, it's an antibody test, and, you know, for 10,000 testing capacity, we're looking at about 700 or 800,000 based on the pricing. That's another component. And then, and then there's a third component, which is new technology and new innovation regarding testing, because everybody's in the same boat with us. We're trying to get high-volume testing more frequent and easier to where we don't, there doesn't have to be a nasal swab. Maybe it's a blood stick test or a spit test or some other type of test, which is easier to manage and you could do with school kids or whoever you want to test. So there's three trains on a track here. And the decision point for the commission is which trains, I assume you want us to go down all the tracks. Tim and I are very interested in what Wichita State has to say. We'll get vetted on that. We'll bring back, we'll present to you. And I think at some point, they're going to have an ask, a funding ask, whether it's prop-up cost or acquisition of tests, they'll have an ask for us. And we don't know what that is yet, because we have to go out and make the road trip to see. So you've got that kind of component operating out here. You've got the here and now of the nasal swab, and the hybrid in the middle right now that we had discussion of yesterday, and what Tim has researched is antibody tests. We've said all along, if they're reliable and available, we should consider. I don't know that they're going to be available right now. I think that if we are interested in antibody tests, we maybe should get in queue to where we can get some supplies as soon as maybe July 1st. And then we can have the discussion of the reliability, the amount of false positive, the amount of, and what it does for us, what it does for our strategy within the county of managing COVID. So I think you want us to look at all solutions, clearly, and I know you want a plan. On the nasal pharyngeal swabs, the plan is, we're going to start testing as many as we can. And we want to do it with random asymptomatic, but we want to do it strategically, and we want to do it where it's going to do the county some good. That clearly is in the pipeline. And we're going to continue to do what we do today, which is test people who are symptomatic, because that's KDHE's guideline, which, and we are a facet of KDHE. It's possible, within the next week or two, that we may want to have a certain number of hours at West Central where anybody can come, which is what healthcare's doing, or Health Corps is doing out at their site. Anybody can come asymptomatic. We may want to, if we have the tests, we may want to begin to offer that. And all the while, keeping an eye on that supply chain to make sure that these 10,000 we have ordered come to fruition. So that's the plan with the existing technology today. We're going to continue to research out here. I think the decision point for the commission soon would be, is antibody testing something we want to do, and if so, how many do you want to do? And then how are we going to data-track that? If I come in for an antibody test and I test negative, I mean, I haven't had it, I don't have the antibody, and I'll go back to work or I'll live my life. If I come in and I test positive for antibodies, then I think the next solution would be we'd send them send them to West Central or we'd send them to the mobile test site and they'd have to do a COVID test. And if they're positive there, clearly, they're quarantined, they get two weeks of, of quarantine. If they're negative there, so you have the antibodies, but you're negative, what do we, what is that? Do we count that as a COVID-positive case, which is now cured or healed? Or do we not count it at all? Or do we count it as positive case? So we have to figure out how that data is going to flow with all the rest of our data so I help, and so we can manage this. So I'm not, I mean, if we want to move forward with antibody testing, there's some technical things on the backside we got to figure out, how are we going to manage it? We can do that. But I think if the commission wants to roll forward with that, we at least ought to get in queue to where we can tell suppliers we are interested for X amount of tests and we at least get the train going down track. And if Wichita State tells us something stunning in the next week or two, maybe we reconsider that. Because the high-volume testing, I think Commissioners, where you wanted to go yesterday, whatever it takes to get high-volume testing. And if antibodies are the answer, then that's, we should take a hard look at that. So I'm kind of with Tim. I don't know that we're there today with an exact ask, other than for you to tell us thematically, yes, look at all options, let's do the best we can for this community. I know you, I know you, I know you think that. And I, and I assure you that that's what we're trying to do. But I do agree with Commissioner Dennis. I, I think clearly we maybe need to do a better job of articulating our plan and even putting it on a timeline, something like this where you can see it, all based on if the supply chain stays consistent and our infection rate stays consistent, then I think we can, we can throw a plan out there. So. Don't know what I just asked for there. I guess maybe give us a little bit more time on testing or...
And, and looking at all the options, especially since there's stuff happening daily or, or weekly, especially if Wichita State has a, has a nice option around the corner. So, Commissioner Cruz?
I have a request. You know, Commissioner Dennis, you talked yesterday about sending, you know, this research that you found. I, I mean, I try to send things that I'm researching and read. Would that be a violation of anything if we were to send, you know, the, the communication that, or the, the research that we're reading? Because, I mean, you sent it to him, but you didn't send it to any of us to read or understand where you're getting your information from. So I would like to make sure that if we're going to make decisions as a board, we all have the same information. Could you answer that, Mr. Papun?
Absolutely, Commissioner Cruz. Mike Papun, County Counselor. It is not a violation of the Open Meetings Act for you to share information with your fellow commissioners. It's only when you engage in interactive dialogue following that sharing of information. So I always encourage you to share information and you might add to that email, not to distribute or reply all when you respond, so.
I might ask if it's okay with Commissioners, that as you, all of you send, Tim and I, information. If it's okay with you, I would just routinely like to forward that on to the other four so that you can read it at your convenience. I think that's probably good policy right now. If you do not want me or Tim to forward it or Mike to forward it, you please specify not to forward it and then we would honor that. But for, Mr. Dennis sent out the information on Quest, and that is one of the vendors we talked with to, to talk about antibody testing and gave us a cost and a delay in how long it would take to get here. But that's clearly something that, with Commissioner Dennis's approval, I would be glad to send to all of you.
I'm fine with the manager forwarding anything I give him.
Sounds like a good plan going forward. Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Well, since we're talking about cost of testing, do we, do we know what the cost of a, of a regular COVID-19 test is that we're doing routinely at this time?
We don't have a fully loaded cost and we're, I'm trying to work with finance to get that for you. That includes materials, lab fees and staff time. We're still working on that.
Okay. I think that's very important for us to know that. And that test, of course, if it comes back negative, it just tells you, I think that way I, I would say is, tells you that you're not contagious at this time. I think that's primarily what we're looking for, is whether or not you have virus that you can give off to other people. That's really what we're looking for, I think. And so if you're, if you test negative on that test, it doesn't mean that you haven't had it in the past or that you won't get it in the future. It simply says you're not contagious at that moment. Is that, is that...
Correct.
The antibody test actually does tell you something that I think is really important. That is, I, I believe that, I'm not, I'm not sure the word susceptible is the right word, but I think that the, the risk of COVID-19 is less if you have antibodies. So I guess that's, that's my understanding anyway. Doesn't mean that you, doesn't mean that you won't get it, and I don't think science has declared that yet, so I'm not saying that. I think you can qualify the answers and say, because you have the antibodies, we don't believe you're as likely, you're not the high, not the same risk level, your risk is less probably because you have antibodies. So that, is that a fair way to say that?
I can't say. What, what you can say, what, what we do know for sure is that if you have antibodies, that does not necessarily mean that you're immune in the future. I don't think we have enough data to tell us yet whether or not the presence of antibodies reduces your likelihood of getting it again. I think that's a question that is to be yet answered.
And I think there's, the, the science is, is developing quickly. And I, I heard a news story just yesterday that kind of alluded to the idea that they don't believe you are, in fact, susceptible to getting the virus if you have the antibodies. That was the, that was the, primarily the point of the news story I heard yesterday. Doesn't mean that's right, that's just play one, one news story. So I know it's very dynamic and there's a lot of, lot of competing ideas and, and information out there, so that, that's challenging. I, as we talk about this, though, I, I also understand that the, the tests that are available to us right now, they're blood tests. That when they, the, the person being tested would have a, would provide a sample of blood drawn through, I guess, into a test tube, I think, and that would be sent off to a lab. So it's a little bit different way of testing that person, not, again, I understand WSU's talking about a saliva test. That's not available yet and again, it's a great idea, but what we have available to us right, right now would be a blood test. Is that what we're talking about?
That is, that is correct.
And so my, my vision would be that we would have a program administered in the private sector that we would potentially fund, where people would access, if you will, a, a blood draw lab, where they would go wherever that would be available in the community, to draw that sample and get that over to the processor. And there probably would be money from the CARES Act that would go to the, the lab that drew the, that drew the blood, as well as to the, the processor of that, of that specimen. So that's kind of the, the idea I think we're talking about here. And then in terms of the results of that, I think we need to qualify it, simply, we simply say, you know, you tested positive for antibodies, here's what that means. Doesn't mean that you're not, not susceptible. We, we think that what this means at this time is, and I think you could qualify the results with information, but I think it, it does provide some assurance to the community that if, if people have the antibodies, I guess my, my opinion is, it does tell that those folks that have the antibodies that, that their risk is lower. I think that's a fair way to say that. So I do think there's value in this and I know that we, I think we have the funds to do this. I know it seems a little more expensive than I would like it to be. We ought to look and find out if we can find less expensive options that are still, have good, good results, data. And then, and the final, the final thing I would say is if someone gets a false negative, which I think is the, the primary error of these tests, a false negative would say, we don't, you don't have the antibodies, when in fact you do. And so in that case, someone will walk away from the test thinking that they don't have the antibodies, they'd have to, they'd have the same risk that anybody else in the community would have. But it would not, it would not err the other way in telling somebody they have the antibodies when in fact they don't. I think that's, that's probably not what would happen in those cases. Can we please clarify what these tests would do through some research?
We'll continue to do more. Right now, it appears that research indicates that particularly in areas of low prevalence like we are, the likelihood of false positives is fairly high.
Oh, it is.
And so that's one of the, again, concerns. It's that false sense of hope that folks may get if they equate antibodies with immunity and they've got a false positive. They think, they may think that they're immune, even though we're telling them this doesn't necessarily mean immunity, when in fact they're not actually...
I would agree. I would have that concern if that's, if that's the situation. I was under the impression it was the opposite of that. So the false negatives is, is the primary error of those tests. But again, I, I, I need the information, so as, as we continue to discuss this, that's the type of, that's the type of information that really tells us whether we ought to do this or not. I think that's the, that's the most critical information we, we could have making that decision. So, thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. I, for me, before we go and spend 600,000 dollars on tests, I, I would like to hear from a professional who can tell us whether or not these tests are actually worth, worth that money. That's a lot of money to be spending on a test that we're not sure about. So before I can even consider supporting that, I'm going to need to hear from somebody and, and not just opinions or articles that we've read around the table, but a, a professional who is going to know and, and give me their opinion.
Okay. Tim, we're summarized up then? So you're going to keep looking all the options?
I guess I have a question, a little bit more data time, a little bit more research time and we'll come back and get... Sure. Yeah. I guess I'd request that we get a little bit more data and research time and come back and keep reporting to the commission on this so it stays on your, on your burner.
I would agree. Thank you. Okay. What next? Are we done with this item?
Mr. Chairman, are we, are we going to talk about the governor's order this Friday? Is that going to come up at some point in the, in the agenda today?
I guess we could talk about it now. We can talk about the governor's order if you want to.
Do we need an off-agenda item to do that?
Chairman, could we cover it under legislative?
Yes, that's what I was going to, I was going to bring that up.
That'd be fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Madam Clerk, next item then?
Item G, consideration of one item for procurement.
Good morning, Mr., I'm going to grab this, I'm not supposed to touch the mic, right? Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. We have one item for your approval this morning, and it's the Medical Bill Review Services for Risk Management. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Corvail Healthcare Corporation, and that's to establish contract pricing per the city Wichita Contract 202-00069 as listed, and that date started April 1st, 2020. It's good through March 31st, 2021, and also has four one-year options to renew. I'll be happy to try to answer, answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of the item.
Okay. Looks like it's a pretty solid contract.
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Any, any comments?
Move to approve boards and bids and contracts.
Yeah, I'd second the motion, but I, I do, I do have one comment, and that is, I, I know we're in a state of, we have a declaration of, of emergency in Sedgwick County, as well as state of Kansas, that's still happening. I think that the state potentially might change their status here soon, but I, I don't see there's any reason that we don't, that we don't activate our Board of Bids, our, our Bid Board essentially to go through these items. And so I know we're in this awkward moment right now where we're kind of not using that, but I think we ought to go ahead and, and have that reconsidered. I, I don't think there's a reason for us not to have a Bid Board discussion on what's coming before us for consideration.
I agree. I might comment on that. Commissioners, with the opening of the building basically next Tuesday, we had talked about that. And we also, I, it's been mentioned loosely in the meeting, but we're bringing all furloughed employees back effective next Tuesday as well, and then we'll kind of assess as we go. So I think that's, I think that would be proper protocol, sir, to reinitiate Bid Board if, if that's not a problem with any Commissioners.
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the item. Other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners.
You bet. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Mr. Manager?
Commissioner, Tom Stoles, County Manager, recommend approval of consent items H through M this morning.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve items H through M.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion to approve consent items H through M. Bein' no comments or questions? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
Mr. Papun?
Mr. Chairman, this is going to be a busy week in the legislature. As many of you know, Thursday is Sinai Die, the last day that the legislature meets, and typically that's a pretty routine matter of disclosing the 2021 session. But this year, a lot of legislation is being queued up and we, a lot could happen on Thursday, and we're going to be watching it very closely. Just to give you an idea of a few things that are going on, and I, I know we've had some input from our lobbyist, Jason Watkins, but Senate Bill 294 and Senate Bill 295 are being put in, in some legislative bills, doing what they call up there a gut and go to move those, those things along. We weren't particularly in favor of Senate Bill 294 and opposed it, but it's this truth in taxation bill that's going to ultimately have the effect of eliminating the tax lead, but require a lot of notice provisions whenever this, this board raises funding from one year, raises the budget from one year to the next. Senate Bill 295, which is a bill that's being moved along too, has come up more recently, and it's a bill that would not allow the Appraiser's Office to consider normal remodeling and repair and replacement as part of their appraisal process. We have reviewed that bill and, and the language and talked to Mark Clark, the Appraiser, and they don't consider these matters anyway, so they said this would have negligible effect on Sedgwick County, so we don't oppose those bills. But those two bills are moving. There are a number of bills up there trying to limit the liability of hospitals and businesses from lawsuits involving the COVID-19 pandemic, provide them with some assurance that citizens or employees will not, will not sue them. We'll see what happens with those bills. And of course, you've, you've read, there could be steps taken by Republicans in the legislature to try to curtail some of the governor's authority to continue with her emergency powers and issue the executive orders that she's been mission, been issuing. And we'll see how, how that's affected. And of course, any bills that I think the governor vetoes, it, it won't be possible for the legislature unless they come back in a special meeting to override any of her vetoes. So it's going to be a very interesting day if you're, if you're a legislative or a legislature watcher to, to tune in on Thursday. As Commissioner Howell mentioned, late yesterday, we got a copy of the new executive order 20-34, which is essentially Phase Two of her original Ad Astra reopen Kansas plan. This order, we, we had given a cheat sheet and some frequently asked question updates earlier in the day, so we had an idea it was coming, but last night we got the actual order. Just to highlight a few of the new aspects of her order, the mass gathering definition has changed from 10 to 15 individuals. And allowed currently, she's allowed currently the nail salons, barber shops, hair salons, tanning saloons, tattoo parlors, those things that are, that are being currently allowed under a 1.5 order that was issued earlier. Fitness centers are still allowed, state-owned and operating casinos may open. This is a new feature of the, of her executive order of Phase Two. So now the casinos, Kansas Star, can open with, of course, appropriate, excuse me, appropriate guidelines. Disallowed still, under even this phase, are bars and nightclubs excluding curb-side service. And that's, and that's pretty much right now, that. And also disallowed are, another section, also, also disallowed and closed under Phase Two are outdoor and indoor large entertainment venues with a capacity of 2,000 or more, fairs, festivals, carnivals, parades, swimming pools, other than single-family backyard pools or pools being used for physical therapy or first responder training and summer camps. We have fielded questions regarding like community pools, HOA situations, and we've been advising them that under this current order, we don't think that that would be allowed. We'll say that on the entertainment venues with a capacity of 2,000, even though that language is there, in her frequently asked questions, she has modified that somewhat to allow the entertainment venues to determine their own capacity. Instead of just looking at a facility and saying, like the Intersbank Arena, you hold 15,000, so you're obviously eliminated from consideration for an event, you can establish the capacity for a particular event. So 81 Speedway, which we've gotten a lot of questions about, could reduce their capacity to 1,000 for an event, and still qualified to be open under the latest orders. So this order goes into effect midnight, tomorrow night, and will be effective on Friday. And her Phase Three, which really opens up virtually everything, is scheduled right now to be June 8th. So it's kind of my update as well. Be happy to answer any questions if you have one.
Well, thanks for the update. Looks like there's some breaking opportunities for some of the, again, for more of our businesses locally. Questions? Do you have a question, Chris or Al?
Yeah, I just, we continue to get questions from people on a number of things. I guess one of the clarifications I'd like to just, I guess, ask, if there's a bar out there that starts to serve food so that they can get around this prohibition, is that something they are allowed to do? If they were to say, "We don't normally sell food, but we're gonna sell food now," as long as they're selling food, that they would be allowed to open and operate? Is that my understanding?
Well, what we've been doing, Commissioner, and trying to advise bars and restaurants, is we've been in contact with the city legal department, Jennifer Magagna and her staff, who works closely with the Wichita Police Department. And in fact, if there's a business inside the city of Wichita, I understand enforcement is probably going to come from Wichita Police Department. We have been taking the position, and I believe it's also in the frequently asked questions, that how the city of Wichita licenses these facilities is going to control. So if you're licensed by the city of Wichita as a bar, you're probably not going to meet the reopen portion of this. If you're licensed as a food establishment, you would be able to be open and comply with the gathering requirements.
And if I understand that correctly, under the ABC, the folks that do inspections on these things, their different licensing, it determines what percentage of food that they sell. Is that correct?
Well, you know, when we were going from not allowing liquor by the drink in the state, we went through another number of iterations where we started looking at the percentage of food that was being served, whether or not you could sell liquor by the drink. I don't know that that's a factor in what the city does in licensing these facilities. So I think right now we're just looking at whether or not the city is licensed them as a bar or a restaurant, so.
In my legislative days, I'm trying to remember the number. It's either 30% or 70%, I forget which one's which. But I believe there's a difference in their license that says it's a restaurant if it sells whatever percentage of their sales comes from food versus from liquor. So it's a different license, and I think that the different license would simply let them know whether they're in this definition, are they a bar or are they a restaurant? That's my opinion, but it'd be nice to have someone take a look at that.
We'll certainly take a look at it, and, of course, the governor's office has, it's Governor Kelly's order, but they're allowing a lot of discretion on local officials to interpret the order and enforce the order, so.
Well, with that, I have one more, and that is, I'm going back to May 1st. We had a discussion in this room on May 1st regarding, Dr. Minz was here, he said he would like to see us consider not allowing buffets and self-service and playgrounds. We had a discussion here and did not take any action. So at that time, we were simply falling back, I think, to the governor's order at that time. And as we know, restaurants that have buffets or self-service, they did, in fact, use that freedom to open back up again, and they're putting risk mitigations in place, which I think are a great idea. I know a number of them are doing all kinds of things to mitigate risk. But one thing that's really in our purview is the public playgrounds aspect. And I know that at least our two parks, I believe that Lake Afton and Sedgwick County Park, that we, our staff, has taken an opportunity to close those playgrounds. And it was a bit surprising to me because I thought we were pretty clear on May the 1st. But I would like to know, under this Phase Two, what is the plan with our Sedgwick County and Lake Afton playground equipment? Are they planning to open, or are they planning to stay closed?
That's a question for the county manager, sir.
Well, I'll do the best I can. So we shut the playgrounds down at the beginning of the virus based on recommendation from the health officer that kids could transmit it if they played on a playground, and we didn't have the ability to do sanitization. I see Tim walked in. Go ahead and take the podium, Tim, because I'll have to defer to you. The meeting from a couple weeks ago where the issue of buffet and playground equipment came up, the commission took no action on either of those, which refers us back to the governor's order. So we interpreted the governor's order regarding playgrounds to be the same as splash parks and other kinds of functionality. So we kept it closed because we didn't, the commission did not direct us at that time to open it, and we were just, so we referred back to the governor's plan and interpreted it as best we could, which I'm trying to explain why there's still a yellow tape on them today, and so does City Wichita and Class Two and Three Cities. So if it's the will of the commission to, and Tim chime in if I missed, spoke on anything.
No, I think you covered, everything you said was accurate. What I would add is that out of an abundance of caution, earlier in April, we had closed all of our playgrounds because we recognized that we didn't have the capacity to keep them clean, and so we were in an effort to keep kids safe. We decided to close those off. I think as other, as Tom said, other Class Two and Three Cities and the city of Wichita closed their playgrounds at about the same time, we don't believe that at this point in time yet, we have the staff capacity to keep the playgrounds clean. We have looked at the Kansas, there's a Kansas Parks and Recreation Association that gives some guidance on reopening, and I believe that their recommendation is do not reopen prior to Phase Two. And so that's part of the reason why we haven't done anything to reverse the action that we initially took in terms of closing them for safety purposes.
Well, if the county was gonna make a decision to close playgrounds, it should have been countywide. We did not do that. I know the city of Wichita, and I support the cities, right, under a whole rule to make decisions for their own cities. They have city parks that have playgrounds, and cities are making decisions. I know that we have disparity in our own communities. Some cities have not closed them, have never closed them. Some cities have, and I think it's fine that the cities are making decisions. But we only have these two parks that are relevant to our jurisdiction that I know of that are specifically Sedgwick County-owned, or Sedgwick County assets, if you will. So if we're gonna make a restrictive order, it should have been countywide, and it should have made the decision for every, because if it's not safe for our playground, it should not be safe for any playground. And I would just, I'd like to read what the state actually put out. In their order, it didn't even mention playgrounds. But it did say in their frequently asked questions, it said, "Are parks and playground equipment open in Phase One?" Says the state does not explicitly disallow playground equipment in Phase One. The decision to allow children to use playground equipment will continue to be under the purview of local governments. And since we discussed, and it goes on, "Since we discussed this on May 1st, and we did not make a choice to make that more restrictive than the state, then the default then would have been that they were open." And I'm disappointed that our staff has made a decision after that discussion to go ahead and close them anyway. I understand the intent was to do that, but the reality is, we don't need to clean the playgrounds. I mean, there's a thing called personal responsibility. If parents are washing their kids, and they're socially distancing, and they're washing their hands, it's not unsafe, in my opinion. So they should have been left open. The kids need things to do. I think they're gonna open, in fact, I even, I read on the governor's new order that comes out Friday, they actually did address it in the FAQ again, they're actually saying public playgrounds that are small should be open. And so I think it's our decision to make a decision on these two park playgrounds, and I think we ought to have them open. And I'll make a motion in just a moment, after some discussion perhaps.
Mike Papun?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, in defense of the county manager and deputy county manager. Even the latest frequently asked questions document issued by the governor's office says exactly what Commissioner Howell said, but it also goes on to say that the state's only restriction is that such business or facilities that are allowed to operate must maintain social distancing and follow fundamental cleaning guidelines. So even though she's said, even under her earlier phases, that playground equipment could be open, that has to, you still have to come up with the guidelines for social distancing and fundamental cleaning guidelines. Now, the reason the commission probably took no action on May 1st is that that would have applied to every playground in the county and closing them more restrictive than the governor's order. And there could be very easily homeowners associations or other entities that can do the fundamental cleaning guidelines and social distancing that are needed under the order. I think the county made the determination that we could not do that, and so in effect, we'd be in violation of our order if we do that. Now, what fundamental cleaning guidelines is for a park like Lake Afton or Sedgwick County Park is probably loose and could be interpreted in many ways. We ought at least, if we're gonna open these parks, do something to try to clean them, or do some kind of an effort at that to be in compliance with the frequently asked questions. That'd be my point.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
By the governor's order, aren't they opening Friday anyway? Parks?
The playgrounds have been open for quite some time.
I'm sorry, the playgrounds?
Yeah, well, they've already been open, sir. We have not.
They're closed right now.
No, that's what we're saying.
No, okay, well, there's a difference between what the governor's order has opened and what we have, as property owners, have decided to do. I mean, we, just because the governor's order allows, I mean, from the very beginning, courthouses have been exempt under the governor's orders. We didn't have to take any steps whatsoever to keep the public from coming into this courthouse, yet the commission and the manager's office has taken proactive steps to limit the number of people coming into the courthouse. In much the same way, it's staff's responsibility to protect our property and take whatever steps we can to be in compliance.
I was under the impression the governor's order limited playgrounds. Is that what you understood?
It actually, again, it left it up to local governments, and so since we didn't take action, the governor's order did not close playgrounds, which is why many communities in Sedgwick County did not close the playgrounds, ever. They've been open this entire time, and I don't know if they're doing, you know, extra cleanings or not. I don't know that. The reality is, I've been there, watched the parents with their children, children are having a great time, they've got hand wipes, they can wash their hands when they're done. It's a great activity for these kids to be doing when they're not in school, and parents are trying to find things for their kids to do. It just is, to me, is a great thing to be open. And in terms of personal responsibility, you can't possibly clean that enough to stop every single virus or every single thing that's out there. It has to come down to personal responsibility, which is tied to the hip of personal freedom. They come together, and if people are going to take risk by being out in the community, and they're gonna have to take some responsibility to make sure they don't touch their hands and wash, or touch their face and wash their hands and things like that. So we're not gonna keep the community safe by stepping or proclaiming to some level that these kids can't possibly get a virus on their body in some way. That's not really possible. But what we can do is ask them to socially distance and to have good behaviors, wash their hands, have parents engage in what their children are doing, and let these kids have access to their playground equipment. I think that's the right thing to do. And, by the way, it's happening all over the county. It's happening in cities everywhere, not, maybe not Wichita, but there are plenty of cities around Wichita, around Sedgwick County that are doing this. And so I don't, I just don't see the significant difference between those activities that are happening inside Sedgwick County and our own two Sedgwick County parks, park playgrounds, so.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, did you have a chance to see the, and I don't know if I sent it to you, I know I sent it to the manager, that video from the White House briefing that showed that UV light kills the coronavirus?
I don't believe I got a copy of that.
I probably should have added you to the, but I just sent a link on YouTube of a White House briefing, which the gentleman that was briefing is an expert on killing viruses, and he says that UV light kills coronavirus. So I think that our playground is all, our equipment is all out in the UV light. So I think that it probably has a good job, it's gonna be dead before we could ever get somebody over there to clean that piece of equipment.
Good. All right. Was there any plans to open this, the playgrounds, from the staff's perspective in the near future?
I think we were going to, with the new phase, I was gonna talk with Tim about it, actually just remove the tape on Friday. But if the commission wants to do it today, we'll get it removed today.
Okay.
Just to be clear, I'd like to make a motion, just to clarify this thing, because again, I think we were clear enough on May 1st, but apparently we weren't. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and open those playgrounds today.
Okay. I'll second. But a motion to second to open playgrounds. Any other comments?
I have a real quick comment. Can we make sure that we have the signage that, you know, we, the signage that's up right now is that everything's closed? Is there a way to place reminders about hygiene, personal responsibility, social distancing, those kinds of things? Is there a way, is there a way that we could do that?
Yes, we will work with communications to get some new signs made up that identify all those recommendations.
Okay. Thank you.
And if I might also add, Commissioners, the enforcement of any of these governor's orders are upon law enforcement. And in the case of Sedgwick County Park, it'd be the sheriff's office. Sheriff has his own legal advisor, Laura Oblinger. We will also run by this by her and let you know if there's any pushback from them, because ultimately, you could open it up, but if the sheriff thinks that that's still a violation of the order, there's always a very limited chance, but a possibility of a ticket being given, so.
Good.
And I just want to be clear that the staff decision two weeks ago to keep the closure was based on the governor's order, based on what Mike just read regarding our inability to clean. So we were not intentionally trying to counter what the commission had intended for that day, so.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
But we're hearing conflicting reports then, so the governor's order never closed playgrounds?
Correct.
But you're saying that you interpreted that, because that's what I thought, but now I'm hearing it didn't.
It was the interpretation that you could open them if you maintained social distancing and could somehow clean them. That was the entire read. So we don't have the staff to clean it, so our interpretation was we couldn't open, based on her order.
That was staff interpretation, okay. Well, regardless of where we were, I appreciate the motion and the second, and get those open, so.
Commissioner Howell?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say, I do appreciate staff. I know everyone's doing the very best they can. So please understand, I appreciate the heart and the spirit of everyone involved in this. So I don't want you to feel like I'm criticizing how we got here. I know everyone's doing the very best they can, so please hear me. I just think it's time to get them open, and let's make a definitive decision. One of my concerns is we have had some constituents who have actually had confrontations with the sheriff's office, and that's very uncomfortable, especially when I thought we were pretty clear on May 1st. And so that's why I'm bringing this up today, so that we can get this cleaned up. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meister?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Other?
Does anybody have anything other? Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, we had a zoo board meeting yesterday afternoon, and they are back open. I want to make sure that the public knows that they're back open. Now, the way that you get in is you call ahead and get your tickets, and you get a time in order to be able to enter. Right now, I think they're eliminating through 1,000 people being able to get tickets in a day. I think as the governor's order moves forward, it looks like in the near future we'll be moving up to 1,000. But the main reason I want to talk about this is that the zoo's been closed for a couple months now, and a huge loss in revenue as a result of that. And now that they're back open, I certainly hope that the public goes out and supports the zoo. Once you get out there, what you're going to find is that because of the funding that the zoo board has been able to garner, plus the money that come out of Sedgwick County, you're gonna see the steel is up at the entrance for the new gift shop. And in addition, a lot of concrete work has been done where the admin building is going. So if nothing else, you need to go by and check out what the new entrance is starting to look like. On a sad note, all of us, all of board members here, the commission, last fall had a very nice dinner with the zoo board, and that was hosted by Martha Buford, as you recall. She passed away Monday morning, and so I want to make sure that we pass our condolences on to her entire family and thank her for what she's done for the zoo. We sincerely appreciate her support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Bob and Martha are fantastic members of our community, no doubt about it. So thank you for sharing the update on the zoo and the other stuff. Does anybody else? I gotta say, I'll just, we'll close the meeting. It's the first time in my political career that I've witnessed a 30-minute discussion about playground equipment and had a vote on to open or close playground equipment, so that's a first in my career, so. Mr. Jim?
Thank you. I just have, I guess, a final question. I meant to ask this earlier, and I don't know if it's appropriate to ask now, I think since others kind of open into, we can do whatever we need to do here. But what's our plan for opening up our commission room to the public? I'd like to get our public re-engaged and be able to do in-person commentary. I'd like to see that opened up along with what we're doing at the courthouse here, but is there a plan to let the public start attending these meetings?
In my visits with you later this week, tomorrow and Friday, I've got three options. I've got three options for you on things that we could do different inside this room. A lot of it depends on where you all sit. And if we can somehow get you back up on this bench, then I think that we could then begin to allow some public in to speak from that podium as we are arranged right now. It's tricky, so I'll have some options for you, Commissioner, to consider and that we can implement for the June 3rd meeting.
All right. Thank you.
Any other comments? Being done, we stand adjourned. Have a safe Memorial Weekend.